First up, we have a discussion of our facility events policy.
We have Melinda doing this presentation tonight and she'll just walk through. It's really just an update related to the tobacco and vaping and then alcohol related to the entrepreneurs.
So first of all, let's talk about what the current policy says and what changes staff has recommended. Right now, the policy prohibits smoking in any city-owned operated or managed facility within the courtyard of the MCL and then all the outdoor recreation facilities, the tennis complex, the courts and bleachers, restaurants, concession stands, within 10 feet of dugouts, team benches, playing fields at both Lake Park and Vista Ridge Park and then both Sun Valley and College Street pools. So it also, this policy, for some reason, we also include city-owned vehicles and equipment, enclosed equipment. So that's what is currently prohibited. So some of the changes we're proposing, the first thing we're proposing is that we change, we add a definition of smoking and in that definition of smoking, we include nicotine, electronic nicotine and vapor devices. So anytime we outlaw smoking, we're also outlawing vaping. And then changing the restriction to match the city ordinance that says that no smoking within 15 feet of any door, window, vent, or other opening to a place where smoking is prohibited. And then also to prohibit smoking at Wayne Ferguson Plaza. James has had some rules in place since the plaza opened where we've tried to limit smoking to certain areas with 15 feet of the splash pad. I'll let him talk to you a little bit about what we're doing and why he thinks it's best just to go ahead and prohibit at the entire plaza.
Thank you. Currently, we prohibit it within 15 feet of the splash pad, which is primarily a children's area, and within 15 feet of the oval lower lawn, right in front of the stage. We've had comments from attendees at concerts when they're in the upper lawn, the wedge-shaped grass lawn, that smoke is a problem for them also. So the original intent, original thought was to add the wedge-shaped grass lawn, do the entire grass lawn and the splash pad with the 15-foot buffer. Once you do that, really all that leaves is a small seating area by the stage, the tiled plaza area on Charles across from MCL Grand and some portions of the boardwalk. Then you get into the maintenance issue and lots of people can attest to this. There are tons of cigarette butts, not only in the grass lawn, but in the landscaping, in the water, in the cracks in the wood along the boardwalk, and those are items that require being picked up individually, one at a time, by parks crews. And that is a very time-consuming task and if it's not done, you wind up with a trashy-looking park. So partly for the audience experience in the lawn, but also because of the maintenance issues, we felt it was at least better to propose to council that we look at. That plaza is not a traditional park, it's an event space, very similar to MCL Grand, except there doesn't have to be a roof or walls. Smoking would still be allowed on the sidewalks and on, in the alley because those are not technically part of the plaza, they're platted out of it.
Thank you, James. Also, we have a limit, a prohibition right now for smokeless tobacco, only at the MCL Grand and at the pools. So we're proposing that we include smokeless tobacco prohibited at the MCL Courtyard, Wayne Ferguson Plaza, the library, City Hall, the annex, Hedrick House, Animal Adoption Center, the rec centers, and the senior center. Basically, we looked at all the facilities where the public has access to. Carolyn actually had a complaint a couple of weeks ago in the library for somebody that was dipping or chewing whatever at the study tables. So we propose adding all of these things to the smokeless tobacco.
Again, that's really a kind of a nuisance issue and it is also an appearance issue with the facilities. We find people spitting the cups and leaving the cups out and it's a...
It's been an issue for facilities with drinking fountains. When people spit in drinking fountains, it clogs them up. So definitely we'll make it easier for facilities and clean up the area. And then alcohol, the current policy also talks about where we have alcohol, where we allow alcohol. Right now, it's the community rooms, Hedrick House, Lake Park pavilions, and the picnic areas, the Central Park pavilions, the third floor, the City Hall reception floor, the MCL, the parks and streets when we have city events, and the rodeo arena. So in the cleanup, we're looking at adding Wayne Ferguson Plaza and also the Entrepreneurial Center where we would allow alcohol. Now, I understand at the Entrepreneurial Center, typically they have kegs there, it's for members only, so it wouldn't be for the public, it would just be for the people that are members at the, using the Entrepreneurial Center.
Can you put that restriction on it?
Can we put that restriction on it? I'm assuming Donna would...
You know, the people that are allowed in the Entrepreneurial Center have to be members. So I think we could, under our contract with the DEC, we could do that, but I don't really think there would be people in the center that weren't members. But I'd want to work through that and think about that.
Okay. I'd like to look into it.
Yeah, okay, we could do that.
Because I know they have catered events that we have non-members.
They do.
Yeah, as a way to get new membership.
Okay.
I mean, I don't...
So that may be something we'd want to, if we're having a catered event, you're going to want to allow alcohol. So let us do a little bit more research on that.
I don't think we should make them jump through too many hurdles. I mean, let's allow it and let them...
But even a catered event, you're looking at by invitation. You know, just putting a sign out on the sidewalk, come in, have some free food and alcohol, we don't care whether you're interested in what we're doing or not.
No, it's quite fairly open, I would guess. Again, I don't know the details. I know they allowed it in Addison, town of Addison allows it at the DEC facility. I'm sure that the one in Denton also allows it, so it is standard practice.
Let's look at it.
Councilman Ferguson, what's the concern about them having alcohol there?
I don't know.
I don't know if I want to get into every one of the angles, but just the idea that that could become a beer hall rather than Entrepreneurial Center.
I've certainly hit those questions myself and have asked those questions and I'm told it's not been an issue. So we can certainly look at rules perhaps we could put in place to assure that, but I think the membership kind of regulates itself, is what I'm told.
For the smoking prohibition, we don't have the Entrepreneurial Center on there, do they have rules that restrict smoking?
No, we don't, but that's a good, a good catch.
I know you said, okay.
Do they allow smoking? I don't know if that...
I have to look at it.
I guess we'd have to probably talk to the DEC and see.
Most of their facilities are non-smoking. I mean, actually, all their facilities are non-smoking, yes. So, I mean, the other thing to remember is that we're, we're operating the Entrepreneurial Center. So even if the DEC's in there, I mean, one of our employees is managing it, so I mean, the restrictions we put on it would be in place.
We would probably want to add it to the policy to prohibit it.
How much?
And I'm assuming we want to prohibit smokeless tobacco there, too?
Oh, sorry.
All right, so basically, these are all of our proposed changes. We wanted to give you an opportunity to give us any feedback before we bring the policy back to y'all at the next council meeting.
So we'll do research on the alcohol issue in Entrepreneurial Center and they'll be doing a report that we'll bring back to you.
As somebody who picks up hundreds of cigarette butts a day, I am firmly in favor and anybody that complains they've lost their privileges by their peers and them probably in the past not abiding by community standards and the cigarette butts, that that's the norm, not the exception. So I think it's a great idea. And I know with the vaping, with my business, when I banned it, I put it out on Facebook and I had more compliments by banning vaping than anything I've ever posted on Facebook.
I'm with James on the cigarette butts. It's not only that, but I sat through KDA with somebody smoking a cigar and it was not fun.
I think it's going to be a lot easier for James' people to manage that, too, outlaw in the whole plaza.
Well, the smokeless in the plaza, too. If you're sitting in the grass and they're spitting in the grass, I mean...
It's pretty nasty.
Yeah.
But we will bring this back to you while you're in the next meeting or the next, do a little bit more research on that.
With that, we'll head and have discussion of regular agenda items and the consent agenda. Public hearing. Item one on the consent agenda. Item two.
Did you notice on item two, this is your reinsurance for public care. Again, based on the significant increase in cost, we are raising that individual stop to us $175,000. What you got figured along with that stuff?
Item three. Item four. I have a change, there's a scripter's error, and if I could get a motion...
Item nine.
Is that on item nine? Okay, wrong one.
The fee rule.
I'm going to move to the different thing, all right. That was item four. Item five. Item six.
I've just added, just the charter requires a majority of the entire city council to pass the budget, so that would be all four of y'all.
That was me.
Item seven.
On this one, I wanted to point out that the motion does have to be specific and listed under your comments. It has the statement that you have to understate law make, which is under the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .436086 for the wall. That has to be specifically stated and it also requires all four votes.
Item eight.
This item also has a very specific motion.
It's listed under your...
Item nine, this is where I have this scripter's error. The motion will need to approve the fee ordinance and include the volumetric rate of 3.05. The rate that was shown was 3.04. So if anybody wants that, there it is. And that's all I have for the agenda. Any comments? All right. We'll adjourn the work session and see you at the regular session at 7:00.
7:00 and I call this meeting to order and in recognition of international talk like a pirate day, there be a quorum present. Here we go. Councilman Ferguson, if you wouldn't mind with the invocation.
Please rise for a moment of silent prayer.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
First up on the agenda, we have a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for heavy equipment, outdoor rental, sales, display service on a 3.591 acre lot located at 553 Bennett Lane. I have Randy Rivera here available to answer questions. Thank you for being here. Staff, do we have any comment for this?
No, sir.
All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Ferguson and a second by Councilman Daniels. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And public hearing is closed. So now I'll need a motion.
Move to approves presented.
There we go.
Second.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending zoning, the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for heavy equipment, outdoor rentals, sales, display, service on approximately 3.591 acre lot legally described as Lot 1, Block A, Johnson Edition, located on the north side of Bennett Lane, approximately 350 feet east of Ridgeway Drive, Ridgeview Drive at 553 Bennett Lane and zoned light industrial district, providing for repealer, severability, and a penalty, and declaring an emergency.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Next up, we have the Visitor Citizens Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I did not have any cards filled out, so we will go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I have had no requests for removal from the consent agenda, so I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve, second.
I have a motion by Councilman Jones and a second by Councilman Daniels. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item F, regular hearings, consideration of a variance to the fee schedule for a waiver of athletic field rental fees and temporary event permit fees associated with the Battle of the Badge Benefit softball tournament. The tournament will benefit the Children's Advocacy Center for Denton County and will take place on October 15th, 2016 at the Toyota of Lewisville Railroad Park. It is city staff's recommendation that we approve the variance as set forth in the caption above. And we've done this, we know how many years we've done this? All of them? Yeah.
Lots of years.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Daniels and a second by Councilman Ferguson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. All right. Item four, consideration of a variance to the fee schedule for a waiver of pavilion rental fees and temporary event permit fees associated with the annual World Scouting Jamboree on the Air. The Lewisville Amateur Radio Association will host a session for scouts to join the annual World Scouting Jamboree on the Air on October 15th. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Ferguson, a second from Councilman Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. That one's actually pretty cool. If you've ever had a chance to go to one of those, they have scouts from all over the world on the radio and they're doing shortwave radio worldwide, so it's, it's quite the free-for-all. All right. Item five, consideration of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2015-2016 adopted budget. The ordinance is to amend the fiscal year 1516 adopted budget to include all supplements and changes approved by council throughout the year and to authorize four new fund supplements, including the health fund, $500,000. Item two, insurance risk fund, $300,000. Item three, utility fund, $334,395. And four, recreation fund, $5,000. Recommendation is that we approve the ordinance amending the fiscal year 1516 budget. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Daniels, second by Councilman Jones. All those in favor signify... Oh, city attorney has to read that one.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, amending the previously adopted and approved budget ordinance for the fiscal year October 1st, 2015 to September 30th, 2016 by providing supplemental appropriations to the various funds, providing an effective date and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item six, consideration of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2016-2017 operating budget. This ordinance adopts an operating budget for all funds beginning October 1st, 2016 and ending September 30th, 2017. The city council recommend, or the recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption above. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Ferguson, a second from Councilman Jones.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, adopting and approving a budget for the city of Lewisville, Texas, for the year beginning October 1st, 2016 and ending September 30th, 2017, providing for an effective date and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, consideration of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2016-2017 tax rate. This action will adopt the city's annual ad valorem tax rate for all taxable property at 0.436086 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. While the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2016-2017 is the same as the 2015-2016 tax rate of 0.436086, the proposed tax rate exceeds the effective tax rate of 0.419014. Therefore, the ordinance must be approved by four voting members with specific language in the motion. The recommendation is that we approve the proposed ordinance adopting the tax rate.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.436086, which is effectively a 4.0743% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, establishing the tax rate and tax levy for the city of Lewisville, Texas, for the year 2016-2017 upon all taxable property in said city in conformity with the laws of the state of Texas and the charter provisions and all ordinances of said city, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, consideration of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of easements for the construction, access, and maintenance of a water transmission line from the southwest corner of and across Lewisville landfill, Block A, on Valley Ridge Boulevard to Midway Pump Station at 2110 Midway Road, and to undertake all associated utility improvements. The city will first attempt to acquire the necessary easements voluntarily through the making of a bona fide offer prior to filling, filing any eminent domain procedure. The recommendation is that the city council consider and adopt the resolution as set forth in the caption above by using the following language.
I move that the city of Lewisville, Texas, adopt the resolution described in agenda item number eight and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire the public use, the property described and depicted in attachment one attached to the resolution, said description and depiction being incorporated into this motion for all purposes for the construction, access, and maintenance of the water line and other associated utility improvements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second from Councilman Jones and Daniels. No city attorney on this one. All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item nine, consideration of an ordinance amending the fee schedule. These changes include items discussed at the budget workshop held on August 13th as well as newly proposed modifications. Staff recommend that city council approve the ordinance amending section 2-201 fee schedule.
I move that the fee schedule ordinance, the volumetric rate for water rates shown as 3.04 to correct the rate of 3.05.
So you moved that the, the rates with that one modification?
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, amending the Lewisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Section 2-201 fee schedule, with various fees charged by several departments of the city, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Reports. Nika. Mr. Monahan.
This weekend, the paving of the roads out at Lake Park, or this past weekend, had to be delayed. It's expected that they'll be paved Wednesday and Thursday of this week and it's not anticipated that it is going to delay the October 1st opening of the park. Also, this Thursday, we'll be having our public meetings concerning the possible design of the multi-generational center. It'll be at Memorial Park Rec Center from 6:30 to 8:30 and we encourage everyone to come out and express their desires of what they would like to see in the new center.
Thank you, sir. Very exciting. All right. We're working our way down the table?
Nothing.
Not even Coffee with Cops on the 30th?
We have Coffee with the... Thank you, sir. We do want to remind everybody about Coffee with the Cops, our second one, September 30th at 7:00 AM to late 30:00 AM at the Martinez Grill in Tuckera down here on South Mill. We're looking forward to everybody coming out and just have coffee and talk to us and we're going to enjoy that and listen to our folks.
The first one was awesome. I'm glad to see the police department doing that. Thank you, sir. Mr. Kuckey.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, members of council. I just wanted to remind you, if you didn't notice the western wear on some of our staff today, that this weekend, we will have the 2016 Western Days Festival to be held Friday from 5:00 PM to 11:30 PM and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 11:30 PM. This annual event has grabbed a place on the North Texas calendar. Last year, we drew almost 30,000, just a nudge under, within about 200 people. This year's weather forecast looks very good, very promising. We do anticipate going past 30,000 people attending this year's festival. Friday night headliner is Eli Young Band. The Saturday headliner is Old Ninety Sevens. We also have the Light Crust Doughboys inside the MCL Grand. So some fabulous music, the gunfights, the Native American dancers, the tamale competition, the parade. It's going to be a great event. It is free until 7:00 PM with a ticket. You can print tickets off the website, lewisvelewesondays.com. From 7:00 PM on, it is $10 per person and that is a hard fee. So we hope people will come out and have a great time in historic Old Town Lewisville.
Thank you, sir.
Our lake level, sir, is just hovering just below the conservation pool, about four tenths below.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, council, I have, last week, we found out we were awarded our certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting. This is an award or certification we get on our comprehensive annual financial report, our annual financial statements after our annual audit every year. And so this was, we were awarded this for the fiscal year September 30th, 2015, our last fiscal year. GFOA established this certification program in 1945 and it was to encourage and support state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles and prepare a comprehensive annual financial report that is evidence in the spirit of transparency and just full disclosure. GFOA recognizes those individual governments who have achieved this certification. The goal of the program is to assess the financial health, is not to assess the financial health of the, the particular governments, but rather create a report, a comprehensive report that users of that report can assess on their own. So this makes the 27th year that the city hasn't received this award and it's really a culmination of all the individuals in our finance department who work on the day-to-day transactions to make sure everything's accurately recorded. And it's also, the other departments have a great hand in this. I think every department has some sort of staff devoted to the administrative element of their activities and in conjunction with them, we are able to record and, and have accurate financial statements to where we're able to put this report together every year. So anyway, just wanted to let you know.
Great. Congratulations. Mr. Ferris?
Yeah, my first question, Chief Kerbo, not that anybody's keeping score, but since y'all have been playing the fire department, what is the record between the two or is that known?
I think we won once.
Ooh. Okay.
And that was actually a game I played in, too.
Okay, just curious. I do want to mention a couple of things coming up this week. The North Texas Giving Day is Thursday, so I encourage everybody, it's a great time to give because your money is leveraged. And then, of course, Western Days this weekend. This is my favorite event of the year. I love Western Days, so I can't wait to get out there and watch the tamale eating and everything else that goes on. It's so much fun.
All right. Just want to remind everyone that on November 19th, the Fur Ball will be happening, our Roaring Twenties themed ball will be at the MCL Grand on November 19th, the music by the Texas Gypsies. Go to the city of Lewisville website and get your tickets today.
City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, MCL Grand... Yes, MCL Grand. I've mentioned this show before, Lion of Texas, a one-man show presented by Sam Houston. Be presented on September 21. We talked about the Light Crust Doughboys earlier. This is the oldest existing musical group as far as recording, the recording industry goes. Nobody that's still performing has had a longer history in the recording business, so they're pretty famous. I still remember Pappy Leo Daniel. Some of y'all might, some of you won't, but that should be a fun show, so be sure and check that out, along with a lot of other activities that will be going on at the MCL Grand during Western Days. I'm going to mention something else here in a moment related to that. Black Box Songwriter Series on October 9 presents Drew Kennedy, and that Black Box series has been drawing some full audiences, so, and it's probably a statement of how good those shows are, so encourage you to check that out. Of course, Western Days, yes, it is definitely Western Days, in case you can't tell from at least the way I dressed, and it's going to be exciting, it's going to be a big year. Look for a record attendance, for sure, and so hope to see y'all there both days and anybody you want to bring. There'll be a presentation on September 27 by the Army Corps of Engineers on Louisville Dam Safety Modifications. That's a public meeting, if you'd like to go. Acoustic jams, still every Friday in the, usually in the arts gallery, so I dropped in Friday night in my regalia that I wear to host the symphony and dropped in afterwards on that concert, and it was, it was a fun event. Incidentally, Friday night was the premiere of the Steinway Nine-Foot Concert de Piano that the, the council approved at the last meeting, and it was a phenomenal show. We picked an outstanding performer to introduce that piano to audiences, and the audiences, audience was extremely excited. Art Exhibits, Don't Fence Me In runs August 30 through October 29 in the educational wing, and if you haven't been over there and seen it yet, Art and the Characters of Frontier Texas is in the main gallery, and that runs from the 17th through October 22. I'm also going to shout out one other event, just because I think it will be fun. Frost Bank, in celebration of their one-year anniversary, is bringing a chuck wagon into Old Town Thursday morning, about 5:30, it'll set up shop, start cooking, and starting at 7:30 and running until 9:30, you can get a free breakfast in Old Town over at the Plaza, so can't beat that deal. I think it'll be a lot of fun. It's a good way to start getting into the Western Days mood, so put that on your calendar, too. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Julie? Officer, appreciate you being here. Thank you so much, and thanks to all our first responders. You guys are, you guys are awesome. You carry the flag well. With that, I just have one quick note. September is library card signup month. Today's libraries are about a lot more than just books, and they are encouraging everyone to come out and get a free library card. I can't think of a better use of your tax dollars than the library, so make sure you get out there and get your library card, get it renewed, go check something out. It'll be cool. With that, we are going to convene into closed session, and we'll be back. Counselor, is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.